I was just gonna wait till we hit six o'clock to get started. All right, well, I show six o'clock PM, so I would like to welcome everyone to the committee of the whole meeting on this October 11th, 2021. We have one item on tonight's agenda, it's BNO tax changes. And Carrie Roller, I understand that you'll kind of lead us through this. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we're here to discuss some recommended changes to the city's BNO tax rate structure. We discussed quite a bit with overall budget structure and how our expenditures increase at a higher rate than our revenues. And so a change in BNO taxes could be one of the ways that we can smooth things out a bit. Instead of relying on to use fund balance to make ends meet, some other changes to consider is that we do have some big capacity in property tax, so that is another option. But with that said, I want to introduce Nate Malone. He is currently the Budget and Accounting Manager and has was previously our Tax and Licensing Manager since 2017. So almost the whole time we've had BNO tax here at the City of Renton, he's our expert on BNO tax. And he is going to take us through a presentation of some possible changes to the city's BNO tax rate structure. So Nate, I will hand it over to you.
All right. Good evening, council members. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna be talking about the BNO tax updates, potential changes. Just a brief overview, this was, is everybody able to see my screen?
We cannot hear your presentation.
Okay, it's, we're getting a spinning ball.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay. All right, so.
We're sort of, we're not in presentation mode exactly, but we can see it. We can also see the next slide.
Okay.
There it is. That's just right.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. So just quickly to recap what Carrie was kind of mentioning, the council retreat. There were some options presented on some potential BNO tax changes that could help supplement this revenue shortfall over the expenditures. Things that were presented during the council retreat included changes to the BNO tax thresholds, changes to the BNO tax rates, changes to the tax cap. And based on the feedback presented at the council retreat, we have presented some further analysis, which we will go through to this after this evening. So some of the why, on why we are looking at potentially changing the BNO tax rates or structure. This is the long range forecast. As you can see, we are currently projected 2025 to be at zero fund balance. As Carrie briefly touched on at the beginning of this presentation, this is due to expenditures outpacing revenue growth, a lot of that being due to the fact that property tax is limited at a 1% growth each year. So in terms of where we are now, Renton is, in terms of threshold and rates, Renton is one of the highest tax thresholds. So we have one of the most, one of the best for small businesses in terms of the tax threshold. Our rates are also one of the lowest of comparable cities, excluding Kent, which has slightly lower rates for manufacturing and retailing. However, they also do have a square footage tax as well as a pretty substantially high license fee for in-city businesses. Just to give some makeup of what our current business community is, is made up of, these are the licensed businesses within Renton, broken out by general category. The majority being retail and construction making up 43%, closely followed by services making up 20%, of our businesses licensing my town. So our current tax base of the 8100 businesses currently licensed in Renton, approximately 1,200 of those businesses, so 15% are currently paying the BNO tax, the remainder of those businesses of the 8100 are below the $500,000 threshold. Of the 1,200 that do pay tax, approximately 60% of those report at least some retail activity. So they would report potentially manufacturing, retailing, wholesaling, but 60% of them report at least a minimal amount of retailing activity, with the top 50 retailers making up approximately 70% of the retailing BNO taxes collected. Currently, retail BNO tax makes up approximately 13% of the taxes collected in a year. Where, as on the previous slide, we saw almost just over 40% of the businesses in Renton are retailing, or that would be their primary classification. Another thing is 90% of our BNO taxes are currently collected on a quarterly filing frequency, and 80% of the revenues that come into the city are collected between quarter one and quarter three of a typical year. So in terms of the adjustment options that we analyze for further review, we talked about lowering the tax threshold. So currently, we have a $500,000 tax threshold, and we could lower that down to as low as 20,000. And that is the statutory requirement that we have at least a $20,000 tax threshold. The second option would be increasing tax rates. The third option would be increasing the maximum tax cap. We are currently, we currently have a maximum amount that any one business could pay in a given year. And then the fourth one we will present today is a combination of the three adjustment options. Some considerations when looking at the following slides. We do have currently in our code an inflation limitation on tax rate. We currently have not changed tax rates since the BNO tax inception in 2016. And currently, our code does prohibit us from increasing the tax rates beyond the rate of inflation in any given year. That said, the city does not wish to create an undue burden by creating a new tax rate every single year. And we only wish to utilize tax rate increases when it's critically important to keep city services funded. Also, a consideration in increasing the max tax cap, we want to ensure that we are encouraging large businesses to stay in our community and support the local economic growth by providing a large number of staff that are working within our city and supporting the economy. Then the third consideration is our timeline of communication. We just need to make sure that we are providing ample opportunity to reach out to the businesses, and that may require some additional time, given the current status of being in the pandemic and traditional outreach options may not be available to the city. So we'll go ahead and jump right into lowering the tax threshold. So currently, as stated previously, there's 1,200 businesses paying tax. By lowering the threshold to 250,000, which would be essentially cutting our current threshold in half, that would create an additional 500 to 600 taxpayers. And the anticipated revenue increase would be approximately 150,000. That said, this would also create an administrative, additional administrative burden with additional filers, likely additional potential refunds, delinquencies, and revenue, the revenue increase may not offset the administrative costs associated with adding an additional 500 to 600 taxpayers. Currently, we do have one of the highest, or currently, we do have the highest threshold at 500,000. Lowering that could impact smaller businesses and potentially reduce Renton's business startup relocation encouragement. Renton is also one of the highest business license fees for businesses at or below 250,000 in gross receipts in a year. And lowering the threshold may impact those small businesses as well, because they are already paying the higher license fee compared to some of our local cities around us. The other thing to note on this, as mentioned before, the threshold cannot be removed entirely per the state statutes on this. So based on the analysis of this one, the city staff is not recommending a change to lowering the tax threshold at this time. The second option that we looked at was increasing tax rates. We looked at a few different scenarios. Presented here are three different levels for both the retailing and non-retailing rate, because they are currently different. We do have a .0085 rate for non-retailing and a .005 for retailing. So we looked at three different scenarios with increasing both rates close to the same. So the first scenario here with 600,000 in additional revenue at the .0095 for non-retailing is close to 10%. So we looked at the same number for retailing, and that would create an additional 150,000. For non-retailing, .001 or 17.6% increase created an additional 900,000 estimated revenues. And for retailing, increasing by 20%, we create an additional 300,000 at the .006 rate. And then the last option we looked at was close to 50% increase for non-retailing, which was .00125, which would create additional 2.4 million estimate. And for retailing, that would be the .0075, 50% increase, which would be an additional 700,000 in revenues. One thing to note on increasing the tax rate, we are also limited on the maximum that we can raise this to, the maximum rate that we can charge, you know, taxpayers in the city is .002 without voter, without going to vote to increase it beyond that point. The third option we took a look at for our analysis was increasing the maximum tax cap. Currently, the tax cap is set to 4.3 million, which is adjusted annually by inflation. We're currently the only city in Washington to have a maximum tax amount. The impact of increasing the maximum tax, council can choose to eliminate the cap entirely, or in increments, or have a phase out. In optimal economic conditions, eliminating the tax cap could generate an additional 10 to 15 million in tax per year. But based on our analysis, current economic conditions might limit that closer to 1 to 5 million, depending on the pandemic recovery. And so this is the three options that we looked at, both, all three with a five-year phase out, increasing 1 million a year, 1 and 1/2 million a year, or 2 million a year. Essentially, that is 20, 30, and 40% increases, depending on which option is best fit. And the last one we looked at is a combination of all of these, or some of these different with the rates and the cap, to see which one would work best. And so we provided some analysis on the next few slides for some of the scenarios that we ran through. So this slide is the long-range impact of revenues and expenditures for four different scenarios. Our baseline revenues are the blue bars, and so that is what our current revenue projections are for operating revenues. The black line at the top is the 50% increase option for both the non-retailing and the retailing rate, so the .00125 and the .0075, as well as a $2 million cap increase per year. The red line is the approximately 20% increase in tax rates, the .001 and the .006 rates for, point, that should be .006 rates for non-retailing and retailing, and as well as a cap 2 million increase. The purple line is just strictly a $2 million cap increase with no changes to the rates. And then the green line would just be the 10% increase to rates and no impact to the tax cap.
Nate, can I jump in and ask a question and maybe let other council members ask questions at this point?
Yes.
So, so this is, if I understand this graph correctly, it's showing how much these revenues fell off from 2019 to 2020 to 2021, right? Is that how it starts out?
Correct.
And then, okay, and then that's the recovery. Is, I'm wondering where the numbers come from that show that it takes till 2027 just to get, you know, to make up half of what we lost in that sort of recessionary collapse? Is that, where are we getting those numbers?
I think what this is showing is that difference between how our revenue increases only at approximately about a 1% increase per year, where our expenditures increase at about a 3%. And so this is all of our baseline revenue, and then our baseline expenditures are in the gray. So the baseline revenues decreased from 2019 to 2020, just because of the pandemic. And then this is just us climbing back up to show that there's going to be a large imbalance in the difference between our revenues and our expenditures. So we're gonna have to use some of our fund balance as we move through the years to make up the difference.
Okay, I might, I might be missing something. For me, I'm just wondering about that climb out. I mean, I know it's gonna take a while to climb out. I wasn't sure if this was, you know, say, the Puget Sound region's best estimate of a six-year climb out to get back to where we were. Is that what this is saying, or, or is it? Or am I missing a key pointer?
So I think one of the things to note on this slide is the 2019 and 2020 figures are the actual revenues. 21 and on are the budgeted revenues. So that's what this slide is showing is, these are forecasted revenues. That does not necessarily indicate what the revenues are coming in at. This was our estimate based on the Q2 budget adjustment update.
Okay, and I don't want to beat this to death, and I certainly, I understand you don't have a crystal ball, and I also appreciate you're being conservative. So I don't want any of that to be lost. But I was just, just wondering how, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a dismal-looking forecast in terms of, it looks like we don't, you know, it takes years to get back, and we have to increase these rates to get back to where we were. Where an optimist might hope that as soon as, you know, COVID is finally gone, we're back to where we were. But am I kind of understanding that right, though, that is, we're being conservative with the forecast to make sure we have enough funds? Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes, we always are, when we budget, we budget conservatively with our revenues more on the lower side and our expenditures more on the high side. And so really, I think the main thing that we're trying to identify here is that there is a difference between the blue line and the gray line every year, and that gap gets bigger and bigger and bigger by making these changes in the BNO taxes that we're suggesting. The lines that Nate has drawn in other colors helps make that gap smaller every year.
I understand. So it's sort of a sensitivity analysis, and I shouldn't fixate on how high that blue line is, but rather how much this helps close the gap.
Yes.
Good. Thank you for that. Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, thank you. Can you please return back a couple of slides to the tax cap? One more. So my understanding, if we just say that we have a current tax cap amount at set at 5 million, let's just round it up and call it $5 million. That means anything above that is exempted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're the only city in Washington to have a tax cap at all?
Correct. I believe there is another city that does have a cap out where the rate would change.
Okay, and then if you'd move to the next slide, I'm just trying to build my question. So when we say, starting with $5 million, which is what our cap is now, if we increase 1 million per year, we're gonna go from 5 to 6 to 7 to 8 to 9, and then 0. Is that what we're saying?
Correct.
So in the $2 million scenario, we'd be going from 5 to 7 to 9 to 11 to 13, and then 0.
Correct.
As compared to just eliminating it tomorrow altogether.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from council at this point? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember McGurven.
I think Councilmember Perez had her hand up first.
Oh, forgive me. Okay, yeah, Councilmember Perez, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you for coming back to this slide. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason why it looks so dramatical is not just because of the pandemic, but it's previous to the pandemic. We already knew that we were losing revenue because of, we were losing the money of the annexation. So we were thinking and planning two years ago that we should do something to start bringing more revenue to the city, but because of different situations, we have not done it. So now we are in a position that looks more dramatical. If that's accurate, or I'm just making this up to understand better the graphic.
So the graphic from 2019, the blue line seems abnormally large. One of the reasons is, is because we had a change in accounting method. So that line includes some inter-fund transfers. So it's, it was inflating both the expenditure and the revenues. But then, yes, we anticipated when the pandemic hit that we were going to be losing revenue. So we anticipated that the blue line would be decreasing, and then we cut costs significantly to adjust for that. In 2021 and onward, we're moving back to more of the baseline, and knowing that our expenses increase about 3 to 4% per year, that's just going up at an exponential rate higher than how our revenues can increase, because we're limited right now. The only thing that we're really increasing revenue-wise is the property tax, which is at 1% per year. So that's how it's, why it's increasing so quickly. So this is one of the options that we could increase this, this tax to be able to make up some of that.
Thank you. That was a great response. However, the pandemic make it, making it worse, but we kind of knew that this was gonna happen eventually. Am I correct here?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And if I, if I may, I think the next slide where we show the fund impact, the fund balance impact, that's gonna help to explain this gap a lot more.
We can go to that slide if that might help.
Yeah, let's, let's hold that thought for a minute. I've got two other hands up, and if it's okay, I'll quickly go to those. I think Council McGurven, and then I think Councilmember Benedetti after that.
Sure, thank you. And I was gonna hold my question, but it is pertinent to these slides, so I figured may as well ask while we're on them. My question is also similar to Councilmember Halloran's on the only city to have a cap. I guess my follow-up question on that would be, how many of those other cities within comparable cities, do all of those other cities also have a BNO tax, or they don't have a local option to compare it to? I just want to make sure we're on a level playing field when we're talking about, you know, their ability, our competitiveness within the region to attract larger employers.
Yeah, I would say most of the cities surrounding Renton do have ABNO tax. There are a few exceptions. Kirkland, Redmond, just coming, coming to mind off the top of my head.
Not to name names, but that's like Google and Microsoft, right?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you. So my question is, how many businesses are we talking about that top out at that 4.83? Are we, are we focusing mostly on a handful, or are we, you know, are we looking at as many as 100? How many, how many folks are topping out already? In other words, as we face this out, how many, how many businesses are we really going to be bringing into the fold?
It's a, it's a very, very small number. To be a handful.
And Nate, for clarity, you're, you're probably trying to refrain from having specific records for specific businesses.
Correct.
Become public, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't, why don't we move on? I don't think I see any other hands raised. So why don't we move on? Obviously, it's an interesting topic. I'm sure we'll have more questions.
All right, so this is a very similar slide to the last slide. This is just showing our long-range forecast of fund balance with the potential changes that we analyzed. So again, the same coloring was used, the 50% increase in rates in black, the 20% in red, the cap only in purple, and the 10% rates only in green. So this gives a picture more over the long range of what our ending fund balance will look like up through 2027.
The bars that are decreasing are where we're having to use our fund balance to make up the difference between our expenditures and our revenues. And so the bar is then decreasing our, our fund balances, or, you know, balances that we have available year over year because of that difference.
Correct. So the gray is our baseline forecasted fund balance based on the long-range forecast that was presented on the second slide. So based on the analysis, we came to a recommendation that we wanted to bring to council. Our recommendation is to adopt multiple tax ordinance, ordinance changes as described below. Number one would be an increase of the tax cap at 2 million a year with a five-year phase out, increasing the non-retailing to .001, which is the 17.6%, increasing the retailing to .006, which is the 20% increase, no change to the threshold. And then we would propose that we implement the tax cap change effective January 2022, and the tax rate changes effective January 2023. And that would be to allow us to do significant outreach to the business community that's gonna be most impacted, the largest number are gonna be most impacted by the rates. And then we would also propose that the inflationary limitation is removed from the, from the BNO tax code. So just to demonstrate what this might look like for a couple of businesses, we presented one, the first example is a service business such as a law firm with $1 million in rent and taxable receipts. At the old rates, they would pay 850 a year. At the new rates, they'd be paying 1,000 with a difference of 150 per year. For a retail business, such as a restaurant, with the same, same amount of rent and taxable receipts, a million, at the old rates, they would be paying 500. At the new rates, they'd be paying 600, a difference of $100 per year. So this is the impact that our staff recommendation would have to the BNO tax revenues. On the left is if no change, no changes were made, what are 4 On the left is if no changes were made, what our forecasted revenues are through 2027. And then with our recommendation forecasted through 2027 on the right. As you can see, the percentage of total revenues is the percentage of total operating revenues. So with no change, that is approximately 9% and with the change, it is nearly 15% by 2027. And this assumes a 2% growth on BNO tax revenues each year as a baseline. So this would be the long-range forecast with the staff recommendation. As we can see, the previous forecast had us crossing the zero line in 2025. This will extend it beyond 2027 before we get the ending fund balance down to zero or below. Again, this, as mentioned earlier, this long-range forecast is an estimate and conservative budgeting for revenues and expenditures. Some of the other, so additionally, we looked at what would be within our stabilization policy, which would be having 12% fund balance. So we looked at what rates or changes could be made to leave us with 12% fund balance by 2027. And that would be the 50% increase in the rates as well as the 2 billion change to the cap each year. And that would leave us with almost exactly 12% ending fund balance in 2027. That said, this estimate of our long-range forecast is conservative. And so our recommendation is to go with the only 20% increase as opposed to the 50% increase and leave it as a potential talking point for the future, depending on how the revenues and expenditures come in over the next several years.
Okay, I'm going to stop for just a second and say, I see at least a couple of hands raised. And I'm sorry, I couldn't tell which one went up first, maybe Councilmember Van. Do you have a question? I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Van, did you have a question?
No, not yet. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Okay, Council, excuse me, I don't have the best screen, I think, for seeing which hands go up first. But Councilmember Halloran, I see your hand raised. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to thank again staff for the work they do on these presentations. It really helps me personally to understand what's going on. And one of the things that came up during the finance committee meeting when we were looking at this originally a couple of weeks ago is, you know, that trend line is still going down. And I personally, coming from 35 years in finance, I personally would like to see that stabilize well above zero. In fact, well above 12% at some point. Because anytime a trend line is going to go down like that, it makes me very curious what it's going to look like for the next five years after that. So moving the inevitable out two years from 2025 to 2027 is good. That's the right direction. And I understand we can always come back and revisit this, but I still, I mean, the three retreats that I've been at, this conversation has come up that we have to do something and the pandemic kind of put the kibosh on that. But I'm still of the opinion that we have to do something. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised right at the moment, so I'll invite Nate and Carrie to finish up.
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
I know, the screen doesn't help. Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Halloran in the seven years that I have been a council member, that green light always have raised many, many questions. And at least in the last six retreats that we have had as a council, we have said that we need to make changes. And every single year that we wait to make another change, something different is going to happen that is going to make it harder. And in this time, it was the pandemic. I also would like to see that more that we have more finance, more stable financing. I always say that we cannot spend more money, the money that we receive. But also, we don't want to go into that, but definitely, we don't want every year to be scratching our heads thinking what is going to happen tomorrow. So just make two sentences. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. If anyone else wants to speak up, just feel free to go off mute and call out. But I think we're ready for Nate and Carrie to go on. And we've got about 10 more minutes, I think.
All right. So just to touch briefly on the flattening that downward trend, this is just looking at a potential increase to the BNO, which is only one of our revenue sources. I think if we needed to flatten that out or we felt more comfortable flattening that out, we would need to look potentially beyond BNO tax and maybe looking to property taxes or other potential revenues. Also, another factor might be considering decreasing revenues to help flatten that curve as well. So for our proposed timeline for implementation, today we're here, committee of the whole presentation. We plan based on the feedback from council to work on drafting and ordinance and prepare it for first reading in November, first and second reading in November of 2021. We will also be doing outreach on the new rates and new tax cap once that has gone through first reading, just to indicate to our business community with some of the potential impact of the changes coming up, maybe January 2022 would be the new cap effective date, the new tax cap effective date. March or sometime in spring of 2022, do a presentation to Chamber of Commerce or other business groups within our community. Summer of 2022, do some more final outreach on the rate changes to our business community, including potentially holding some workshops to further help understand the changes that are forthcoming. And then January 2023 would be the new rates effective date. So based on that, the committee of the whole presentation is today. Depending on the feedback from council, we could have a draft ordinance prepared by approximately the 8th of November and have that available for first reading on the 15th and second reading and adoption on November 29. But with that, does anybody have any further questions? Well, feedback.
As I ask for questions, I just want to jump in and just sort of acknowledge that if, for members of our business community that are watching us here tonight, that I know when we've talked about this at the council retreat before, this council realizes that businesses provide a lot more than just taxes for this community. We appreciate our businesses. They provide payroll, which is absolutely critical. It fuels everything. The money that their employees take home really pays for everything. So the tax, you know, we've always worked hard to keep the taxes as low as possible. And part of the equation as we talk about balancing the budget is we want to continue to have Renton be a preferred place to do business. And in fact, we grow our revenues by being a preferred place to do business if we can get more businesses in. So I just want to say that so that anybody from the business community tonight that's watching doesn't think, oh, we're just kind of trying to get as much as we can. I know this council's been sensitive about trying to keep the rates as low as possible and trying to encourage business. With that, I want to go ahead and take some questions. I see Councilmember Van has a hand up.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just have a question. I look at the timeline and I was just wondering and perhaps staff has already done it. But has there been outreach besides just, you know, the presentation here today? And thank you for the presentation. Has there been outreach to our business community at all prior to this? That's my first question. And then my second is, for me, is I see the timeline, but I do, I'm struggling to to see where community input, business input, opportunities or outreach that we've done. And so if we haven't, would we consider doing that at, you know, the chamber is, you know, or if, you know, kind of just outreach to business individually? So those are my question, two-part question.
So we have not done any outreach at this time. We were waiting to hear feedback from council on some of the proposed recommendations. With that said, we do plan to do significant outreach over the next, this year as well as well into next year, including going to the Chamber of Commerce and several other potential places where businesses can provide feedback and ask questions in various different forums.
I guess my struggling to understand is, you know, the recommendation is brought here and then we discuss, we have our council member give feedback and then legislation is brought on to council. Of course, through time, community member can come and comment, but there hasn't been very much outreach to community, right, with information. But after the fact, when legislation, if were to be passed, then there'll be outreach before the implementation of it. So I'm just trying to understand. And it seems like what you're saying is that there's probably going to be no outreach besides the council meetings until it gets passed, right?
That's correct.
Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you. I just had a quick, need a quick refresher on the history and certainly for the benefit of the members that weren't on council last time we did a change. Remind me, was it the threshold we previously altered the last time we adjusted the BNO? I don't think we touched the cap, if I remember right, or did we adjust that slightly as well? I'm just trying to sit for reference for history, what the action we've taken previously was.
Sure. So we have not increased the cap beyond the inflation that's in our code. We did previously change the tax threshold. That was done in coordination with removing the head tax. So it was taking away the head tax portion of our license fees and essentially lowering the threshold to make up the lost revenue from removing the head tax that was currently imposed on businesses at that time in 2018.
Okay, thank you. And then if I can ask just one quick sort of related follow-up, that all the forecasting models that you presented, they don't assume any new businesses at this point, right? Only what we have currently here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any hands raised at the moment. I guess I just wanted to offer that, so if we're talking about just the cap in the near term, that sounds like that's just a handful of businesses that would need to be immediately communicated with. I tend to agree with Councilmember Van that it would be best if the businesses could be communicated with prior to our taking final action. Just as a matter of, you know, gathering public input. Obviously, we're not bound by what that input is, but I think that council members would feel, you know, good about having an opportunity for people impacted to receive it. But did I understand that the proposal is sort of a two-part where we change that that cap, which affects a small number of taxpayers in the near term and then longer term, there would be more chance for publicity about us talking about the rates and getting more feedback longer term. Is that correct?
Yeah, we had the two different effective dates for the changes. We did not previously discuss potentially waiting to do the legislation on the rate piece of it. But given feedback from council that we may, that may be an option for us to delay the legislation on that and provide some additional outreach prior to bringing that legislation piece for the rate changes to council.
Mr. President?
Yes. Mr. Prince, Councilmember Prince.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say, I agree with you. And when we first initiated the BNO tax, we had, I'd say, a semi-robust process where the Van administration went out and talked, members of the administration went out and talked to our business community, talked to our community before it came fully baked to us so that there was some input there from them. This, I have no problem with this, but I think we should have some semblance of a public process before it comes back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Yeah, if I could just add to that, and I think maybe it's possible, given the calendar and the small number of parties immediately impacted. I think what maybe we're struggling with a little bit is we're used to basically having public hearings before we set new tax rates. So if we're going to increase property taxes, we go out with a public hearing and obviously, people are never happy about having taxes go up. So we're giving them a chance to talk about it. But I think that's kind of what we'd like to see done here, even if it's done informally. Is that correct? Am I sort of gathering the intent of the council members? I, you know, I don't know if I want to put constraints on how that has to happen. But I also see, I mean, it sounds like, I guess I'd ask any council members to speak up if they feel that this is, you know, going way off on the wrong direction at this point.
Council President, I would not say that we're way off. I too would agree that we need some reach out here. Because I think, especially because we haven't done anything with this for however many years, that any change to it is going to be impactful to our businesses. And at a time when we're hearing from them, that they have been struggling. So it feels to me like it would be wrong-headed of us to make a decision without some outreach or conversation beforehand or opportunity, public forums where they can ask questions. You know, I think we should have some communication with them. I do really appreciate the direction that staff have taken this. Because what it does for us is it still leaves us as an incubator with that lower threshold. You know, the 500,000, it really does give smaller businesses an opportunity to grow in our community and that really, that I think is a great direction to have. So I did have a question though. So if we're really only talking about a very small handful of businesses that would be impacted by that cap, then why the five-year rollout? It's a question.
Phase out? Our proposal on that was, again, just to limit the initial impact on businesses and not increase the potential tax liability by 100% and do a more phased-in approach.
Thank you.
President Corman?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I follow up with the comment of Councilmember Benedetti. I also want to to thank you, Carrie and Nate, for your presentation, how thoughtful it was. You know, what you brought to the table today. While I commented before that I would like to see a more stable line, I think that your proposals and recommendations are I think that your proposals and recommendations are 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 very conservative. But at the same time, are very helpful, considering that we have to do something. If they chose choice, what we don't have a choice is not to do anything. That is not a choice anymore in this case. So considering that we are going to have to do something, uh, your, the recommendation that you're bringing to the table, I think is something that we all can live with and and considering that they're the the businesses. And I say businesses because I know that there's a handful of, and I'm trying to be not very obvious about this, that we need to talk to, um, they're going to understand, or I hope that they will understand what is the need to do this. Uh, uh, thank you very much for your presentation again. Uh, I I I think the recommendations are are very sensible. I don't think we are out of line at all in this and consider that we should have done this like three or four years ago. I think um, I think it's not a dramatic, a dramatic increase for anybody, especially because what Councilmember Benedetti say, we we want to keep being a desirable place for business to grow and to be here and 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 to choose Renton. So thank you very much.
I I think I should bring it to a close soon. I I and I thank you, Councilmember Perez, for those comments. And um, I was thinking in a one, one value in talking to the handful of impacted businesses, especially about that cap, would be just to frankly be sure we have the numbers right and that we haven't yet, you know, incorrectly assumed how that might really impact them or us. But um, um, I I I'm hoping this is the kind of direction. I don't think they you're looking for specific action out of us tonight, just sort of, it's a presentation. So um, I thank council for the feedback and and in fact, would just recommend that um, if council members have thoughts after this meeting, feel free to contact Nate or Carrie or um, or Armando, I think, with your inputs. Any final comments from anyone? Okay, um, all right. Well, seeing none, I I thank you and I'll go ahead and adjourn the committee of the whole and we'll reconvene in nine minutes for the council meeting. Thank you.